And hopefully go live on Facebook. I don't know. It says I didn't have permission to livestream.
We're not on yet.
Of course I have permission.
Tell me when you're ready.
Well, I'm just going to try and livestream. It's just told me I don't have permission to do that. Which is a new one on many. Oh, hang on, try again. I will just try again. Now I do. Great. That's good. Okay.
Have you any ideas, councillor Ridley?
It's okay, I'm sorted now.
All right, okay.
I'm sorted now. I just, um. Okay, preparing to go live. I'm going to let the guests in. Bear with me, please. It's not gone live yet.
Okay.
It says it's now streaming live on Facebook, chairman. So, ready when you're.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome to the Events Committee meeting this evening. Good evening and nice to see you. And of course, nice to see all the councillors. And good evening, gentlemen. Right. Are we expecting anybody else? Or I'll be there now?
With Emma, with Emma's chair.
Okay. In that case, we'll just go through the, the, the normal rubric before we start. Declaration of interest. Does anybody, any committee council members have any interest to declare if they feel this good? Are there any items requiring urgent attention?
No, chairman.
Freedom Information Act applies to this meeting as the Protection Act 2018. Mobile telephones, I'd be grateful if you'd rather turn them off or set it to silent or put them away or whatever. Is this meeting being recorded? Yes, the meeting is being recorded. But participation, participation, I listed a bit when I used to go to the great speech. Where we, we, we have, we have to conduct part of the meeting with just the councillors involved because that's the bit, that's the financial bits. And then we all have a, it's a come all ye after that. So what I intend to do is go down the, the agenda and after item seven, we'll go back and, and open. And until then, we're suspending standing orders. Can I have your permission to suspend standing orders, committee? Yeah, standing orders. Yes, thank you. Thank you. All right. Standing orders are suspended.
Chairman, you're suspending them now?
Yes, I was going to. No, I wasn't. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm standing on my head, aren't I? I'm going to suspend, suspend standing orders after item seven.
I believe that's great, but I think you have just suspended standing orders judging by the booking that took place. So you might want to.
In that case, can I ask for permission to re-instate standing orders? Thank you councillor Ridley. And take that smile on your face. Thank you. Right. Here we go then with agreeing the agendas between parts one and two. I don't think we're getting out to part two. No. Decorations of interest. No declaration of interest. Dispensations. Has anybody asked for dispensation?
No, chairman.
Minutes of the last meeting. Everybody's had a copy of that? Has anybody got anything that they wish to comment on or add? Councillor Ridley?
I'd like to propose to adopt them, Chair.
Do I have a second one? Secondly, by councillor Morehead. Thank you. All those in favour? Right, the councillors, the minutes are adopted. Right, next item is event expenditure. Now, you should have a copy of all that. Would I be taking you through that, Andrew?
Yes, chairman, I would. Do you want me to share my screen? I know it could be quite small, but if you would like me to do that, I can do that.
Probably easiest way to do it, yes.
Okay, I'll give it a try. And, um. Let me just hope. Are you able to see it now, Chair?
Yes, I can just about see it.
Okay. Just to take you through, I think obviously things have changed nationally since I wrote this last week. So it's, everything is a bit of a movable feast. But just to take you through from what's from last time. In terms of expenditure for remembrance, we've got costs of the Poppy Wall banner, some A-frames, some first aid that will be provided on Sunday at a very low level. There is an additional cost that's not actually in there for remembrance at the moment. But what has changed with the service on Sunday means that we have now got someone filming it tomorrow for us, and that is a paid contractor to provide a high quality video that we can then put out on Sunday as things have moved with the, the national lockdown.
Can I perhaps interrupt you for a moment and just ask you to explain so everybody understands what the legions around you are?
Yes, Chair, the, the government announced guidance this afternoon in, in which is sort of what we were doing already, but it has emphasised that attendance should be minimal and it should be short and focused. So what is now happening is on Sunday morning, people can still come and lay their wreaths during their exercise time between eight thirty and ten. Socially distanced, we will have hand sanitising equipment there and be making sure that people do not mingle in any sense at all. And then later in, during the morning, there will be a very short laying of wreaths by the mayor, the chairman of Teambridge District Council, councillor Petherick, four wreaths from the Legion. There will then be the exhortation and the bugler, and that will be it. It will be very, very short. Later in the afternoon, the virtual service led by Reverend Dallas Ailing will be broadcast. And there will also be a broadcast from the clergy, which have been pre-recorded down at the Poppy Wall. And the service will go out as a booklet on the council's website on the Sunday afternoon. I've been in many, many discussions with our Covid advisor. Everything has been cleared to date with environmental health at Teambridge. And I've also had extensive discussions and emails with the Royal British Legion. And I spoke to their president, the chairman, this afternoon at the Dawlish branch. And he's in full accord with what we're doing, as many other councils have cancelled completely what is able to take place due to the requirements.
Okay.
That, that, that is remembrance in a, in a nutshell, I suppose. Looking down the list in terms of expenditure. Again, it, it's very, very difficult. But proceeding, the Christmas tree, we were granted a licence verbally by Teambridge to dig a hole in the ground to put a tree in for this year. But the problem is now acquiring groundwork contractors to actually be able to deliver that.
Yes.
So I now have a contractor. I have two contractors, one who's going to provide us the tree and they'll deliver it. And that's going to be an eighteen foot Christmas tree. And have a second contractor who is going to, having had engineer's advice, to anchor the tree to the side of the bandstand and then put lights on it. And that is hoping to be achieved on the second to third of December. Red Rock Electrical are loaning me Harris fencing, so there's no cost for that in the expenditure for the, for the safety of the tree. Chairman, may I draw your attention to councillor Marwood's hand is raised?
All right, thank you. Councillor Moore?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I was going through the accounts. I thought we were looking at those. Am I correct?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. Yeah.
I just wanted to ask, Angie, I see that there was a gas safe checks on the gas urn. It was quite a large sum, one hundred and thirty. Was there something wrong?
No, that's the standard cost for having the gas urn serviced. It's what the gentleman charged us last year.
Good grief.
Yeah.
But basically, it's, it's the urn, the equipment that goes with it. And yeah, he came and did it in his Covid gear. And we have to have the checks done and we have to have the relevant paperwork.
Yes, you're, you're probably a bit aware, councillor Moore, that since they stiffened up, if you like, the gas regulations. These guys are now charging more than they used to, which I suppose is fair enough. They have to go through all sorts of qualifications and possibly jump through various groups. Almost any gas inspection is expensive these days.
Can we compare, sorry, do we compare this charge with any other company?
No, no, chairman, we, we haven't. In the, in the scheme of things, the hundred and thirty, we provided a good service, the relevant paperwork. And so I haven't gone out for a quote on, on that particularly. And I should draw your attention to the, the, the committee approved the expenditure on the twenty second of September. Okay. I mean fundamentally, we can go out to a quote. I have no objection, but obviously it's a relatively low sum and the gentleman was recommended and has done the work, I believe, for the council.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my, my feeling is that it probably is a reasonable charge in view compared with other things that I've come across. And quite honestly, Angie's time is probably too expensive to spend it chasing up. And can I just apologize, councillor Moore, that you for the amount of relation getting, you're quite right, we are going through the, the expenditure. But I, I can understand why Angie, why the clerk is going through explanations of, of each item. Because some of them have changed so much that it affects the cost. So it does sort of explain reasons and things. I mean, the, the Christmas tree has been a horrendous thing, just trying to dig a hole. So if we can proceed now, have you, have you finished with Christmas tree, Angie?
Yeah, we haven't got a cost actually for digging the hole at the moment. But as I have got the verbal permission of Teambridge to proceed. The virtual Santa is proceeding well and under, under current Covid guidelines, will be able to take place. And we're shortly to release booking for that, fingers crossed. The, the next item has changed substantially. We have the build of the Nativity tableau and also the lighting of the Nativity tableau, taking out the build of the Santa Grotto in the, in the middle. The churches who are leading on the Nativity tableau originally wanted equipment brought from the United States, which is the nativity scene at a cost of around a thousand two hundred pounds, which was their preferred option. I had quite discussions with the Shrewsbury Theatre and they were quite willing to build the nativity for us for a much reduced price of four hundred pounds, which was agreed up until lockdown on Saturday.
Hmm, yeah.
Now with lockdown on Saturday, they are unable to do it. I have approached a local craftsman who can build the Nativity tableau, which is my size. He will paint it, build it out of wood. And he will basically put in his contract that he will do any repairs over future years, so it will have a long lifespan. And he is currently quoting me seven hundred pounds. So I, this is one of the things I, I'm not sure whether the committee wants to proceed. It is an expensive cost. But that's all that is going to be achievable if we are to proceed with Nativity tableau. The lighting estimate for the tableau has been given as seven seventy. That's come from the churches. And that's for the lighting units that need to go in. There probably is a bit of room for manoeuvre on those costs. But, but fundamentally, you're, you're looking at about a thousand four hundred to do the tableau with the carnal flow, which is being loaned for free. And it will be towed up also to the church's drive-in service, which is planned for later in December. And the aim was also to be able to have collections around the tableau. Again, it depends on how much the lockdown is lifted. And our anticipation would be you could still put the tableau down there regardless of lockdown because people can see it when it's, it's there. So at, at the moment, that's, that's where that is at. The Shrewsbury were going to help with the build of the Santa Grotto, which is the one for the virtual Santa. I've had discussions with them and they've got some backdrops, which I'm hoping to receive custody of tomorrow. And we, they won't be charged, so that money will disappear from the budget line. We've managed to find a way around not spending money and achieving a background for Santa to look like he's in a grotto. The next item on the agenda after that is electrical costs because Teambridge will charge us for electric for the tree and the float from the bandstand. And I've estimated a cost there. Coming down through the budget, you've then got music licence costs because we aim to have music, perhaps with the tableau. And also, we were looking at, you know, whether we would be providing music on the strand for late night shopping in November. And obviously that has now gained. I'm not sure where that's going to be at.
Right.
I'll just take you down through and then perhaps you, you might open it up, Chair. We have a cost in there for JR Event Services Limited for Covid advice. They have provided consistent advice over the last few weeks and for Christmas, it should say there too. And I'm in constant contact with them from an events point of view and also from an events point of view in twenty twenty one into what we think may or may not be possible and how to make events Covid secure. I have to say, it has meant that all our risk assessments to date have not had any queries whatsoever in touch from Teambridge and anyone else.
Good.
Going down, at the last meeting, you agreed the gazebos. I've now got a pricing in there. Gazebos have rocketed in price since, since Covid because people have been buying them outside. So at the moment, although we've budgeted for three, I'm probably going to buy two and then see whether the existing sites we've got can be used and it would save us some money there. So I'm still working on that.
The price will come down by next summer with me.
Well. So at the moment, we're still ongoing. Obviously, I'll try and get the gazebos out of this year's budget. And then you've got some other items in there. And then just coming down towards income, we've got the income to date, which was from the drive-in service. We've got refunds, which is store refunds. Probably expecting about another two hundred there. But overall, if you look there, you can see at the moment forecasting something around an eleven thousand pounds underspend.
Yeah.
It's difficult, as you, as you've just heard me say. And at the moment, we've got an income of possibly around one thousand three hundred, which considering we've only held two events this year. You know, it's, it's something to say, but more than happy to answer questions, Chair, on it and appreciate that it's not as firm as it might be, but things are just not as normal as they might be.
Thank you very much, Angie. That's, that's very helpful. Before, I have a question because certainly I'm sure the members will have some questions. We did a castle round quite a lot about what's real about Christmas. There's a long and heated discussion on whether to do nothing or, you know, everything seems to cost a fortune, particularly at the moment. So I wouldn't be at all surprised if you challenge some of the, the charges for the things we're doing. But really, I can assure you that I wouldn't taste either this or nothing. But Angie, Angie's tried all sorts of things. She's come up with different ideas or the costs or whatever. And she's doing a splendid job, but you know, I'll leave her to answer the questions. Any questions?
You've got chairman, chairman, you've got councillor Ridley, which is to ask questions?
Okay.
I want to say one thing, which I think is quite important, which is wow, this is fantastic that how much you've achieved in such changing circumstances so quickly. I am incredibly impressed with what you've managed to pull together so far. I think it sounds a really good thing, that will be cheerful, that will be cheering, that will make a big splash in the middle of the town and will actually be extraordinarily helpful. So thank you for putting all of that together and I think it looks really, really good.
Well, that's quite a relief. Thank you for that. Any, any other comments?
You've got councillor Margaret, chairman?
Yes, I haven't got her on my screen so far.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I would just want to make one is that Angie doesn't only struggle with your events. She's also struggling with the basic things like festive lighting and all the rest of it.
Oh, yeah.
Comes through CAC and she is she's like, a bit like Tinkerbell. She's flitting around from one thing to another, trying to get something in place to keep us all sane over Christmas. And I just think that she deserves a formal vote of thanks for the fact that she just manages to somehow or other keep sane and keep ahead or abreast of all these changes. I think she's, she's doing us proud.
I, I would agree with that. Thank you.
Yeah, here, here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, there you are, Angie. I think you're, you're a devoted thanks. I'll certainly back that one.
Can we, can we minute that as a formal vote of thanks that goes, please, Mr Chair?
I, yes, I think we, are we all happy to?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We are, thank you. I'm, I'm asking a question because I seem to have lost my, my picture of you at the moment. All right, any more questions, any more questions about the event expenditure? No. What do we need approval for there, Angie?
If you could approve the expenditure as there, and obviously there will be some differences in cost as I, as I've outlined. So if you could approve it and then, as I say, I think, I think that's it. And then I can take it from there, but I've got your approval to go forward and you've heard exactly where the money is going.
Okay, well, just for the, the form of it, make sure we've got all the details right. Could you take us through the items that we are, you actually wanted to say?
Yeah, I mean, basically, there anything that's in the column where it says the twenty second of the ninth, it's anything from there on down. So it's from the Poppy Wall banner, right the way down with the bottom bit. So it, it's not the, the last item you approved was the bugler, the VJ day. It's anything coming below that for remembrance and Christmas twenty twenty, right the bottom, Chair.
Well, I'm not going to go through every single one since we have so many. Could you just run, run your eyes down from, from bugler, if you like, down to the bottom and I'll ask for the approval for that expenditure unless you have any queries.
Councillor Margaret has got a hand raised, Chair.
Mr Chairman, I would like to vote or ask for a vote that we approve these figures up until now, understanding that due to the ongoing situation, there may be amendments.
Thank you.
Happy to second that.
Thank you. Jump in together. It's a great relief. Thank you very much.
Everybody up?
Okay, well, that's.
I'll just stop sharing my screen, chairman, and then you should be.
Thank you. I'll keep it back to normal.
There we go.
There we are. Thank you. The expenditure is approved. Well done. Thank you very much, Angie.
Do you want to take a formal vote, Chair?
Sorry?
Do you want to take a formal vote that you've come to, Chair?
Yes, indeed. We have a formal vote of that, but expenditure approved. All those in favour? Yes, yes. Yeah, thank you. Right, that's a relief. Budgets now then, this is another. All the plates are spinning, all the tops are sticks. Because God knows what we do with this one. How do we know what's going to happen next year? We've got a budget. And Angie's views to report. Do you want to take it through that? You've read it.
Yes, Chair, it's sort of like sticking your finger in the air. But I've done, basically, I've done a proposed budget based on if life is normal.
Yeah.
And indicating, I suppose it's, it's saying what we're planning for. One big change is the Armed Forces Day weekend, which is going to fall under the council remit. And I spoke to Alec Fewings today again. And we agreed this is the, the best way forward. And I've asked you, asked you as a result to approve me applying on behalf of the town council for a Ministry of Defence grant, which is available to councils for their infrastructure costs of that weekend. And as I've noted in the report, Tinworth received two thousand pounds each year, so we would hope people could achieve similar. So it sort of replicates what would have happened in a, I suppose, this year to some extent, because we've got the Go Green Fest on there again and, and things like that. In addition to the planned events, we've also got provisional booking, three days of socially distant seaside entertainment on the lawn, which gives us an option if, for example, up until June, we can't do anything, we might have something we can put on.
Yeah.
I think there has to be recognised that in reality, it may be that you have to make a decision perhaps later in, when we go into twenty twenty one, that it may not be possible to hold quite a few of these events. And you'll need to look at alternatives such as drive-ins or whatever again, which is actually what is viable. I've had discussions with various people in the, in the events industry and many people are looking at events till June, July next year. And even then with social distancing in place, but no one is at all certain of anything. The other major change, which I draw your attention to, is I have said, so you've basically got a budget which is very similar to last year. But I've also said that if we should be able to hold any normal events, we would perhaps be a little more proactive in trying to encourage people to make a donation, to contribute. And that was quite clear that we have managed to hold an event and have ticket prices, although we've, we've learnt from that. So I think we know where to pitch next time if we should go down the drive-in route. So I've suggested it's, it's just we encourage donations. If people are doing a refreshment stall for an organisation, we might take a small charge on that because you do set an income target. So I, I think that's the main sort of issues around the report, but it is very much on a wing and a prayer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Has anybody got any questions about Angie's report? Councillor Ridley?
I think you're absolutely right. There's no way we can predict what's going to go, what's going to happen next year. We could have everything from a week of inoculations on the lawn through to continuing social distancing, depending on how we go. So I think your finger in the air budget is absolutely fine. And I think we should accept that budget. And I propose that we accept that as, as the proposed budget with the understanding and expectation that within that overall number, we may well throw it all up in the air and rearrange it into an entirely different set of things as seemed fit at the time. And allow ourselves to be flexible, but know that we have money budgeted to do things. I think the town will be very grateful, happy to see events going on and life coming back into the middle of town. And us doing whatever we can to sort of bring it together in, in, in the next year as the situation allows.
Thank you. So we have a proposal that we budgeted to accept it. Councillor Moore?
I would like to second that proposal, Mr Chairman. And I would just like to add, I, I see that the budget request is the same more or less as, as last year. And this is the fact we don't know what cost might be increased next year because some people would be trying to recover losses they've made this year. But I, and I do like to see that we are going to make some attempt to encourage people who attend events to actually contribute something towards it. I think that is a good balance. But I would second that approval.
Right, all those in favour? Anyone against? Any abstentions? No, that's carried. Thank you. Right, so we come to the next item at that point where I can. What shall I do? What shall I do about standing orders, Angie?
Suspend standing orders.
Suspend them or shall I do the opposite? Suspend standing orders. All those in favour of suspending standing orders? Thank you. Right, there's one thing that I want to say before we go any further actually, because this is a bit where I've been bolting comments. I've had a couple of comments on the issue at the moment. But this is the first time we've talked about maybe asking for payment for the things they put on. It's always been a an act of faith, if you like. It's been my obsession that as far as possible, this should be, I mean, things are never free, but at the end of the day, you know, we're all paying for them because it's only one of our taxes. But, you know, we don't expect anything. I'm always very conscious that, I mean, the comments that young mothers were making when they came about from the fair, that they'd love to take the kids more often, but they just couldn't afford it. So it was always the idea that what we did, as far as possible, it would be free or at very low cost. Now we're talking about maybe asking for donations or making a small charge or whatever. I'd be grateful for your comments. What do you think about that comment? Dan, have you any thoughts? Sorry, I think we've got, can I just ask Dan first? Oh, sorry, I'll give you a minute to think.
No, it's fine. When the WI, when we do the events for the manor, we never try for anything for the children we do. Any child, what comes up with mum wants to, the child have cold drinks, they have biscuits and little tea cakes. We don't charge children at all because I don't think it's important for mothers to let children play, come into the event. So we, the WI never charge a child for anything. If they come, even when they have the lucky dips, if it's very clear that the mother has got more than two children or lots of things, or she's not much, she's not that well, or the child has three lucky dips. So you're mindful that we, and to be fair, we get quite good response from the mothers because they will buy the tea in case. Because they know that we're giving their children the tea in case. We don't accept that if they haven't got it, they haven't got it. But that doesn't mean to say that we shouldn't charge children. Your idea of child enjoying themselves is not to worry about their parents can't afford it.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for that, Angie.
Yes, I would support that. I mean, reject that we don't charge anything involving children. And that's always what I've worked to when we down, be down on the lawn, any stall I have, is providing things for the families and the children for your costs. But I do think, and I have to, an aspect of collecting is very important. Now, I was ever collecting at the drive-in, but I know the problems were in selling tickets and I know the resistance people had to going on to Eventbrite to buy them in the first place. But I know I saw the money going into the buckets as we finished the drive-in service. I also saw the code at the end. But I know that some of those who gave had already given for films earlier on and yet were still prepared to put money in. And I think to have buckets around to perhaps make even more, I know some of the event carnival friends would say buckets around. But I think we have every right to use buckets for marketing or something for collecting at these events.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, my apologies. I think councillor Ridley was first. If I can go to it first.
Well, I think most of my comments have already been, been said. I think the WI principle is a great one to, to follow. I think that's a very good way of doing it. And that's a very well thought out position and that's very admirable. I think that you have to, most of the events that we do aren't the ones where ticketing is particularly appropriate because they're sort of on for a while and you couldn't, you couldn't really do it. But I think having collection buckets and having the principle of if you've had a great time today, please put a fiver in the bucket. You know, is going to be a good one because it means that those who can will and those who can't don't need to be pressured to do so. And I think that's, that's a good way of approaching it. I would, like yourself, Chair, be very happy to see these free. I think the best thing we did that I remember a long while was the Victorian swings and bits and pieces, the free rides on those things. And they went down remarkably well and they were great fun. And there were no, no dirty great diesel engines pumping, pumping soot into the air. And people had a fantastic time with those. And I think the more you can do those, the better. But I do think that having a bucket to offset the expenses and allow people to contribute is a good idea. And we might do something virtually as well to allow people through sort of Facebook to click on a bucket, click on a, click on a PayPal to sort of, you know, contribute to help offset the costs of the events.
All right. Thank you for that. Councillor Moore, thank you for being patient.
No, that's fine. Thank you, Mr Chair. I'd like to let tonight. I think there is rules for manoeuvre at all the different events. Some of them are aimed in the middle of the tourist season when we have a lot of visitors. And I think it's perfectly legitimate then to try and encourage people to contribute because otherwise the money comes from our residents, our council taxpayers. I think when it's, it's other things, as was spoken of, the manor house, which is generally residents and their families. There's a lot more leeway there and especially people who are running it, they really have a, we would say, as they choose, it's up to them. So I think there are, I think we need to choose the occasions and the people running them need to make the decisions as far as appropriate. Depends on the time of year, it depends on the kind of audiences or participants you're going to attract. And it depends on the size, whether it's local people, mainly families. Depends what it's aimed at. But I think there's plenty of scope there for helping those who are not so well off or with several children on one end of the scale. And for actually trying to encourage people who come here because of an event towards it. I know when we were having the airshow, it was very difficult to get people. Because they all, everything's free and it was amazing. And it was amazing. And it was very difficult to get a penny out of some, most of it. But I think it's common sense, it's up to a lot of people who are running the thing. And it's up to the council to also consider what we, what we are doing on behalf of the council taxpayers and what we ask for.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for that. Any more comments? No, we're all happy. All right, well, we'll continue as we intended then. We'll we'll look at it as we go along. And really, it's not going to be the story of the game for the whole of the year, I think. They're going to have to mix things up as we go along. Okay, right. Events for 2020 now, what do we?
Chair, just to say, as people know, the Dawlish Poppy Wall started on Sunday. And it was councillor Foden's mare knitting challenge. And the poppies are growing day by day. And there must be a thank you to Jan Lend and WI because WI came down there. And, and the tableau with the World War One really sets it off. I've been down each morning to check everything is tied on because the weather has not been kind. But everything looks to be going really well. It might be worth asking Anne and Jan what they feel about that.
Yes, Anne, Anne, you first.
I'd be, I'd be delighted. I did take ours down on the very worst day deliberately on Sunday morning. I thought of it, if it stayed full on Sunday and Monday, then it was going to stay put for the rest because the rest of the fortnight is due to be good. Now, I've checked it every day. I shall certainly be tightening our own ties on that. But there was no point in doing it until tomorrow. Tomorrow it will be tightened. But I have seen people going down there. Not a great number yet, the weather hasn't been sunny for them. But I do think it's going very, very nicely. It was a lovely idea and I think it's catching on.
Well, we've been hoping for the best with the weather, I think, from tomorrow on.
I think so. Tomorrow's due to be sunny, actually, all day. Yep.
Let's hope. Jan, have you any observations?
Yeah, I actually think it was a brilliant idea. It was a brilliant idea for the WI. Because when I sent the message around to the ladies who are fairly old, most of the WI ladies, you know, live on their own. They jumped at the challenge and started knitting their poppies, which is what WI do anyway when knitting. But having said that, it was surprising how many people wanted to do something because of the remembrance, to remember people they knew a lot. And it really boosted the WI ladies. And I was very impressed when they started knitting, all of them knitting, and wanting to fit them onto their thing. It was better than every year when I buy the wreath and donate the wreath to do the usual. So I would, I would be very keen to keep it going every year because the public go on the lawn and they see it. And the amount of people are starting to say already, have you seen the poppies down there? Now, in, in the Women's Institute, we do it on all our toes. And some of them starting this in late January and they have a load of poppies. But I think it involves people. I suppose if people remember them, thinking about it, but they're actually doing something what feels good. They feel good about it. And it's involving the public because they tell them, in fact, three of my sisters in Tinmouth knitted some of those poppies because I mentioned it to them, oh, we don't do that, we'll knit you some. So it's surprising how many people enjoy it.
We have got poppies from Cornwall and Buckfastley.
I've got. Wow.
Very good.
I will say the, the poll that I put up is going to have more exposure on the lawn than it ever got either on the 11th of November in the past or in St Gregory's Church. I mean, it's getting wonderful exposure.
It may be if it gets around spotlight, we'll get.
Oh, no.
Madam Mayor, you have a point.
Thank you. Yes, so on Sunday morning I went down and it was lovely to see Angie was already down there putting the banner up. And I took my 10, 11 poppies that I'd knitted down to tie on. And then while I was tying those on, out, out of nowhere, lots of other people came with their poppies to tie on. It was, it was lovely. And crocheted poppies as well. A few purple poppies to remember the animals. And I've had messages from people saying, there's poppies coming from Wales from our, for our poppy wall. And I went down this morning, each time I passed it, there's more poppies. It's excellent. It's really good.
That's good. Councillor Lord?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'd just like to say it's involved people in lots of ways. I have a husband died not long ago and she's self-isolated, more or less. And she's very good at crochet and it's given her something to aim at. And because I'm no good at crochet or knitting, I've got two, one each for one of each of my grandfathers whom I never knew. And it's involving people who are isolated as well. Reading, it's reading the involvement, the community feeling about it. It's great.
That's a nice warm feeling, isn't it?
It is. It is. Yeah.
Well, that's cheered me up now. Got me over all this bad weather and poor old Angie going mad.
Can I just add a short comment, Chair, if that's okay? Because I just, I just think it's been, it's been a lovely thing to do. I'm, I'm no good at knitting. I want to try and learn. And I really hope we can do this again and have it as a, as a regular item. How, and it could, you're right, it could go, literally grow arms and legs with having the children involved with different crafts. It could be felt, felt poppies, all sorts of stuff. So I think if we want to kind of, it'd be lovely to be able to pencil this in for next year and subsequent years as a tradition. If the band, if the, if the bowling green would let, allow us to do this, and I'm sure they would, it's, it's, it's giving a good idea of where they are and putting them on the map as well as the poppies. So I just think it's a wonderful thing to do. And thank you for spreading the word, both Jan and Anne and everybody else. And to you, Ali, as well for bringing this to us. It's been lovely. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thanks for that. All right, well, we're all very happy with our puppies and so we should be. You've got Angie to thank for putting them on the, on the fence, by the way. We were worrying about where to put them and Angie came up with the idea of putting them on the, on the railing. So it worked very well. Right, what are we up to?
Christmas light switch on.
Yes. Well, there's another funny one.
Yes, the national lockdown is proving a slight problem in exactly when our lights may be switched on.
Yeah.
At the moment, I can't give any, I couldn't give you the exact time anyway because that wouldn't fit with COVID. But all I can say is discussions are ongoing.
Yeah, yeah.
If anybody wants lockdown finishes going up to Manchester, please let me know.
That's good thought. Are you going up to Manchester, Martin? They've got to Japan, got to Japan and they'll drop them out. I can't get him to go to Manchester.
Yeah, I like to, at the moment in Manchester, my understanding is people can travel on work purposes, but they'll need somewhere to stay. And that is what is causing, I think, some of the issue. But we are one of a number of towns for the same contractor. So I would imagine they will do their utmost to have our lights on, but they just will not be as on, perhaps as early as we might have hoped. But discussions are ongoing.
We just have to do our best, Angie, as like everything else on this year, you know, do our best.
The, the, the one item that isn't on this list, Chair, because it comes under CAC, is because at the moment we don't know about the lights, we also don't know about the brook lights. We are going to hopefully light the waterfowl compound on a suggestion of the chairman of CAC, councillor Lord, with lighting around the top. And we're working on that at the moment as well.
Councillor Morehead standing there with a torch.
What, to roast the waterfowl?
Yeah, there's the thought.
They'll stop sleeping at night.
Christmas festival, appropriate for Christmas, wouldn't it?
I think you'd rather think of any way that would brighten up Brunswick Place because there's a problem with the no lighting on the tree this year, so.
Yes, yes. And of course, we have the, the problem of the, the posts that at Brunswick, they're not strong enough to take the lighting though. It is a continual problem.
I think it's called a perfect storm this year, Chair.
It is. I must admit, I betray a confidence that Angie and I were chatting the other day and I said, looking back to when you started with this job, everything's gone wrong, isn't it? Not one bit of it Angie's fault. But everything's on the weather, everything's been dreadful. You did something somewhere, Angie.
Chair, Chair, I think it's a coincidence. I don't think it's Angie.
Yes, exactly.
It might be helpful to remember this meeting is being recorded and is live on Facebook.
Yes, indeed, indeed. Absolutely right. All right, well, that takes it up to, that takes it up to the end of the year, really. What can we say about next year? Not a lot.
Chair, the dates remain as I gave out at the last meeting, except for Armed Forces Weekend. We had a provisional date of the 25th, 26th and 27th. But after talking with the Legion, we're looking at the 18th and 19th of June, if it takes place. And that is so that we do not clash with other local towns.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Is there anything else we actually know about next year? We know about the carnival date as well, all, I think.
I think at the moment, we've, we've got the Easter egg hunt on the 3rd of April, the May half term. the May half term from the 29th of May to the 4th of June, the Armed Forces Weekend, 18th, 19th of June. The Giant Screen is booked from the 9th to the 11th of July.
Right.
The 17th and 18th of July is the Go Green Fest and Classic Cars. Carnival is the 14th of August to the 20th of August, and the light switch on date has yet to be agreed. That is something that will need to be thought about after this year. But you might want to go back here to Anne. I know the churches were looking at doing something for Christmas in windows, weren't they, cribs in shop windows? But I guess that may well have changed as well now.
Yes, I was suggesting it for this year, but that's not really come... The shops, I think we ought to congratulate the shops on the way they have decorated their windows. I mean, the pumpkin display was excellent. They really do make good effort when, most of the shops, when they're asking. Congratulations for that.
Well, thank you all for admitting that. Thank you. Oh, yeah, well, there's a loss of what to say about next year, just, it's all written in pale pastel around, isn't it? A vague sketch of what we hope to do. And I mean, let's hope everything is over by next Easter, but who knows? Who knows what's going to happen? So I think that's about it for the events that look ahead, unless anybody has got any bright ideas about something else we could do. Let's move on to item 10, to the list of current blockers.
The only other thing, Chair, which I forgot to mention, is the church is doing a drive-in church service, Christmas carol service, sorry, I believe on the 20th of December.
Yep.
Anne, do you have any more, Chair? Anne, I have more?
Only, it's going, you know, the plans are certainly going ahead at the moment, because it's as late as the 20th of December. I think they will, you know, they're hoping to keep to that. I think possibly it will be two 45-minute services, rather than everybody together. More than that, I don't know, but it is going to involve the opportunity to sing within your car, if you're just be there to appreciate it, and held a concert down in Dollyshwaran in the car park.
Dollyshwaran, sorry.
Dollyshwaran, the car park, I think, there is a main car park.
Yes.
Underneath the bridge.
Sounds a good idea.
So I know that much, but I don't know further.
Okay, we'll be interested in the details when they become available.
Yes, whether the lockdown does finish on the 2nd of October. But I think those things you need to change, so it ought to be able to go ahead the way that it is.
Yeah, that's good. Got something to look forward to. That's excellent. Right now, anything from Tembridge, Angie?
No, as you may be aware, Chair, the resorts officer is currently on maternity leave. And I have asked the people who are covering her whether they had anything to report, and nothing's been available at the current time.
Okay, anything from the joint working group, the two councillors?
No, no update.
We have no part to... So can we resume standing orders? All in favour? Thank you very much. Right, standing orders are resumed, and all we need to do is to say thank you and to close the meeting. Thank you ever so much for your attendance and for your useful comments. And so letting you off the foot with all these horrible numbers we had to throw about after you with no promise of actually achieving anything, until something happens. Thank you. Right, are we off? Are we gone?
You're off Facebook, Anne, we're...